Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. I'd like to call to order our town council meeting here scheduled for January 8th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. And if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll take a moment of silence to reflect on our service members and first responders serving here and abroad, please. In accordance with Mass. General Law, besides LCAT, is anybody taping or recording the meeting tonight? Okay. So, before we get started, I think we all know that there's been many viruses starting out on the west coast and migrating over here to the east, which has affected, I'm sure, many of you in the audience and unfortunately, a couple of our council members tonight. So, as a courtesy of those in attendance for the particular items on this evening's agenda, due to the absence of these council members, I would be recommending to the council that the following agenda items be tabled to January 22nd, 2019, at that council meeting. And I would also add, if we have a full council, those articles would include Item 8(c)(2), Stormwater Enterprise Fund endorsement from Town Council, Item 8(c)(4), Town Manager Compensation and 2019 Goals, and lastly, Item 10(a), Executive Session Pursuit to Mass. General Laws Regarding a Personnel Matter Relating to the Reputations and Character. So, I would ask if we can have a motion to come out of order and deal with these particular items.
I'll make a motion that we take Items 8(c)(2), Items 8(c)(4), Item 10(a) out of order merely for purposes of having these matters tabled until our next council meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to return to our normal council agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Under Public Comments, we have John Mazzarino. Could you, could you please come forward and state?
I'm going to, I'm going to wave down for the time being.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Council comments?
Well, the only comment I just wanted to make, this, we had an email from Craig Jurgensen, from the, Jernstrom, from the Conservation, and something for a future meeting, I think we need to, you know, bring back the Communications Committee, not to so, make it more expansive to include Communications Committee, not just social media. The point of his, his email was twofold. Number one is, he's waiting a response, it could, you know, from either planning or from, or from our Town Manager's office, and this was about a month ago, well, December 13th, I think, the first email was. And I echo his concerns, because I can see that a lot of our meetings are not, or a lot of the, like, Planning Board, and some of our meetings, today's an exception, obviously, are not as well attended because of the public, the postings on public hearings. And it was a very sound letter, in the point that the Springfield newspaper is, does not get the saturation in the town of East Long Meadow, as does the reminder. And when you have matters like one of our petitioners before us tonight, and maybe one or two people show up, and most people didn't know about it, that says that the experiment of using the Springfield newspapers as the vehicle to get public notices is not effective. And, you know, the end results are, the facts speak for themselves. The whole purpose is to get people to show up to meetings, to be part of the process, create more interest in the public, by the public. So, I think what we need to do is put it on the agenda, and maybe get somebody from the reminder here, gets, you know, and so forth, and talk about strategies to get our public notices into the hands of the, of the town, people of the town of East Long Meadow, so that they know what's going on as we move forward, as opposed to looking through a rearview mirror. That's my only comment.
Through the chair, can I ask you a quick question there? So, refresh my memory, were we required by the Charter and the way the language was, did we ever amend that in terms of how things had to be publicized in a newspaper versus a publication? Was that the reason why we're still sticking with that?
I don't think so. I think, especially now that the Springfield newspaper, Republican bought out the reminder. And I think the-
There was an issue of that at some point that came up.
No, I, if you don't mind, we have, through the chair, we have a member, I'm seeing you had not over there, a member of the Charter Commission, Ralph Page. Ralph, do you have a comment, through the chair?
Through the chair, just a quick comment on that. I know there was, that was brought up before with regards to it, but the town council right now is advertising their meetings in the reminder, but yet, the planning department is advertising theirs in the Springfield Republican. It's very difficult to have to look both in the reminder and in the Republican to try and find out when meetings-
Yeah, so we should definitely-
I do remember modifications were made, and they were for financial reasons as well.
Yes.
I think the verbiage, we were able to limit the amount of verbiage to keep the costs down, and there was discussion on where these would be publicized. So, I think it would be, it would be good to take a look at that in the future and make sure that all committees are advertising in the same place to make it community-friendly.
Through the chair, just had one, a quick suggestion this time of year, it's a pretty critical time of year, we start getting a lot of information, so, to really have a focus on improving communication throughout the council, and the Town Manager. And also, because we're all kind of creating a wish list as we go in each meeting, and I think it gets confusing sometimes, I think the last agenda item before we adjourn should be a quick summary of everything that we've requested, you know, because we're, we're holding the Town Manager, and Sarah, and other people accountable to get us information for next meetings and stuff, and it seems somewhat disjointed, because we're asking for a lot of stuff, but then, I'm walking away, I remember the stuff I asked for, but not necessarily what others have. So, maybe to add that, you know, as a last agenda item, a quick summary, keep a running list, here are the things that we're expecting, and when we're expecting them.
Again, through the chair, a quick response, maybe even have it earlier on, because if we go into, into executive session, typically that clears the crowd out and television, and so, that, these items would not be brought to everyone's attention, so maybe, maybe a council comment, Part B, or something like that.
Sure.
Sounds like a plan. Okay. Any other comments? Denise?
I'll start prior to, prior to what I have written, saying that's a great, a great suggestion. If things aren't voted on, then it's very difficult for us to know if it was sort of off-handed, yeah, we'd like to have that, does everybody want that? So, that's a, that's a great way of solving that. Regarding the, the issue of the Republican versus the reminder, handily, Connie, Constance Broders is here tonight from the, she's the planner, and she has pointed out to me, and I, I thought that she had also shared those comments with the Chairman of the Conservation Commission, as to why the reminder is not working for some council, some committees' meetings. Has to do with timing, the timing of when it's needed to the reminder versus the amount of lead time they need for particular boards and commissions. So, I can, I think she's given me a copy of a memo with that. I know we've talked about it at length, to make sure that we are trying to do the best we can. If you all remember, there were some planning meetings that the notice did not get out, and the meetings had to be rescheduled, and part of that was because of those reasons. So, I can get that memo to you all and make sure that Mr. Jernstrom has it as well. Onto my, my already printed report. The mobile food pantry that was approved for $70,150 in funding through the Community Development Grant Program is moving forward. The major expense will be the purchase of a van and equipment that will be used to create the mobile program. Although the council approved the plan originally, I'm sure Carolyn can provide an update as the program gets closer to implementation. Right now, she's specing out that van with the Community Block Grant folks, and I'm sure it'll be rolling in no time. Recreation Director Donna Prather was approached about starting a horseback riding program at Brown's Farm. We've checked with our insurance carrier about liability concerns and the impact on our insurance. Our member services representative stated, "Horse riding isn't more dangerous than other sports and a swimming pool." Which I don't know if, that's not great, because those are, you know, they have quite a bit of liability associated with them, but either we can do those programs or not. This was precipitated by a 4-H program outreach. Donna Prather organized a meeting to see how many 4-Hs, and I think there were like 40 people that came to the meeting. So, there's a lot of interest. There's, there's been discussion and finger pointing that Brown's Farm is not really used for stuff, there are already horse riding trails there, so, we're going to try it and see how, how that will go. So, as part of an effort to help offset impacts that may result from the development and operation of gaming facilities in the Commonwealth, Massachusetts Legislature created the Community Mitigation Fund as part of the Expanded Gaming Act. Pursuant to the Act, applications for funding projects that would mitigate issues a community has experienced from the casino's opening, I've asked department heads to let me know of any impacts they've seen. No one has observed anybody, any so far. And maybe it's because of the slow, real big push on, on the casino, it doesn't seem to have started with the bang that it, that they had anticipated, that there does not seem to be significant impacts, according to the staff here, in traffic, in things down by the Springfield line where we might need another street light or cross, you know, we're distance away, and it doesn't seem to be really providing an impact to us that we would need to mitigate somehow. Those funds are specifically for mitigating, we have to put in the application what, what the issue is, so.
And just to add to that, I may, I believe, if we have mitigating damages, that $100,000 that you're going to address in the next state, in your next paragraph, is what we'd use first. And then, if we find out that everything exceeds that, then we can go to the, to the fund, which is, I believe, paid for by the 5% sales tax that the casino's paying to the state.
Well, look at that. You know a lot more about it than I-
I was here.
You were on this before I was, right? So, that's correct. So, if any of the councilmen know of anything, or have heard of anything, please bring it to the council's attention, to my attention, and we'll, we'll start working on that. The grant is due in February, but I'm sure it is, it's a pretty simple grant application, so we can do that. Also related to the casino, the towns received the first payment of $100,000 from MGM. This annual payment was agreed to by the Board of Selectmen in 2014, as we are designated surrounding community to the casino. That money has no parameters attached to it. Usually, you would take something like that and use it, as Paul has said, if we had some issues to mitigate, that we would use it for that first. But there aren't any real parameters around what we need to use it for. You really don't want to have that money just sitting there, year after year. I know that Carolyn Brennan, COA, has said, you know, the seniors could use transportation to the casino a couple of times. I was hoping that somebody that might be associated with the casino could take that off our plate, and, and see if maybe they could, through the casino itself, provide rides to seniors. So, due to the extremely wet weather, you may have seen these alarming notices letters. One was in the, in the Republican, it was supposed to be yesterday, I think it was today, and every household should be getting these letters. Organics increased at the reservoir that is the source of our drinking water, which in turn called for Springfield Water and Sewer to increase chlorination of the water. In my simplified version of what happens is, the chlorination kills organics, the organics settle into the water, the water comes from Springfield to us, we get the organics along with the water, and it showed our levels to be high for that, to the point where we have to notify the residents. It is not harmful, but it is above the levels that the DEP says. So, there's pretty self-explanatory correspondence on that in here, and if you have any questions, Felix Vashan is, is extremely capable at explaining it in layman's terms to anybody. If I could get this whole thing about organics and chlorination and all of that, I'm sure anybody else would, would be able to understand him. For your information, I've attached a copy of the 2019 Town Hall holiday schedule, so you're aware when the Town Hall is closed throughout the year. And there's a reminder that next week, one of those, I think it's a bartender, host bartender, celebrity bartender events for the Veterans Memorial Committee, next Wednesday at 5:00 to 8:00 at Mario's Cafe Ambiance, and they will be working at the, at Mario's. The veterans are, they're a charming group of people, they are working very hard to get their, their project underway, and, and I'm positive they will be successful. Also, I will be at the MMA Conference next Friday, some of you, I'm sure, will be there, and I'll see y'all there. Thank you, respectfully submitted Denise Menard.
Thank you, Denise. Approval of the minutes from our December 11th, 2018 open session minutes, does anybody need any time to review that? No? Okay. Joe, could I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I propose a motion to approve the December 11th, 2018 open session minutes as is.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Under Communications, Correspondence, and Announcements, Don, do you have anything at all?
No, nothing, nothing over here, just the, we got two letters.
Okay, so, we all received the letter from Kate Delaney Chung to the Town Manager, I believe. Denise, you responded to that letter?
Was the council and the manager, yeah, I think, or-
Yeah. So, I don't know, other than being listed on here, I don't, I don't know if anything else is really required at this point in time, this transparency.
She had asked that the council be made aware, so, you know, we're, we're-
Maybe summarize what the, what just there was.
Certainly. It's, it's pretty, it's, it's not that long of a letter, if you want me to read it?
Sure.
Okay. Dear Ms. Menard and Councilors Hill, Ford, Manley, Kane, Federici, and O'Connor, I've become interested in learning more about the workings of the DPW, and as I've done before, when interested in town workings, I turn to LCAT. It's such a great service, and Don Mackey is doing a great job. I'm concerned, though, that the last DPW board meeting posted to LCAT was in February 2017. I thought it especially strange, given that meetings from the library, assessors, historical, housing, and planning boards all seem to have continuous uninterrupted coverage. Why was coverage of DPW halted? I find this especially concerning, given the DPW Department is a town department that expends a significant amount of taxpayer money, if not the department that spends the most amount of taxpayer money outside of salaries. The DPW and the planning board are the departments that need the most transparency, while coverage of the planning board seems to be above board. The DPW is the department that appears to have least transparency at this point. Also, the last DPW agenda posted to the town website was in October. Was there no meeting in November or December? So many questions. I'm concerned primarily because, given the amount of money that DPW probably spends, I would think this would be a very good port of entry for corruptive forces to return to town. Someone told me online that the DPW board all quit after the town switched to the new form of government, but as of February 2017, at least a few of the prior DPW board members were still on the board. So, you can imagine my confusion about, about all this. It could all be easily received by making sure, resolved by making sure the town does the bare minimum in terms of transparency by recording and posting the board meetings to YouTube. Please feel free to include this in the Communication Act, section of your next meeting. So, that's why it was put in here. Do you want me to read my reply? It's not that long either.
Sure.
Hello, Ms. Chung. Thank you for sharing your concerns regarding the Public Works Board and your recognition of the great service Don Mackey provides the community with LCAT. I hope I can provide some clarity to your concerns. First and foremost, transparency is a priority in all aspects of East Long Meadow's government. You are correct that Mr. Mayberry, Burak, and Wilson resigned after the charter changed the responsibilities of Board of Public Works. The new members of the board are William Jelineus, Phil Abear, Philip Abear, and Thomas O'Connor, uh, Thomas O'Brien. The board meets at least quarterly, and more frequently if needed. More meetings, for instance, are needed when the Public Works Department budget is being formulated. All agendas and minutes are posted on the town's website under the Agenda and Minute tab. Also, you can find lots of information about the Public Works Department under the Boards and Commissions tab, or the Departments tab, and financial information in the Transparency tab. Regarding your question about LCAT taping and posting the Board of Public Works meetings, I'm sure it is just an oversight. In addition to new board members that meet at a different, on a different schedule than the previous board, there is also a new superintendent, Bruce Finney. I've copied Mr. Finney and Mr. Mackey on this email, so they are aware of your concerns. Please feel free to contact me with any additional questions, and thank you again for your email. Since then, of course, as soon as I had sent this to Don Mackey and Bruce, they both replied that they were looking to make sure that all the minutes were up to date. They also have a new, I forgot what his title is, but he took the Shirley Tan Craddy position, and he is the, the sort of coordinator for the Public Works Department. He is going to be sure that everything is posted in a timely manner, that Don Mackey is aware. We did have some transition in the Public Works Department for a while there, and I truly think that's all it was. It, it certainly was not something that was being done on purpose for any reason.
Thank you. We have a second letter from Robert Hartstern, who resides at 16 Windsor Lane, excuse me, in our town. He did not ask that this letter be read into the record, and I don't believe that he asked for any comments from you, Denise.
He did ask, maybe it was in the email that he sent it, or in a note that he sent to me, but he did ask the council be aware of it, and that it be put on the agenda, so we did.
Okay. So, if anybody wants, I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe.
I'm okay.
I was just going to say, so if anybody wants a copy of this letter, it can, Tom, I'm sure you can supply it to anyone, so.
So, through the chair, I would just ask, so, when something like this comes in, specifically about the planning board, I mean, a planning matter, that he personally experienced and, you know, read the letter, and, you know, I can understand his frustration. It's not the first time we've heard this in the last few months, so, in this situation, so how is this being addressed to essentially improve customer service experience of people that don't necessarily know the path and what they need to do, are coming in and getting timely information, so they can move their process along as quickly as possible, and not, you know, and I don't know all the facts, obviously, I, I'm just reading here, but just trying to understand, you know, what we can do to be a little more user-friendly.
So, this gentleman was a swap person. He, he worked in the department, and he worked in the department when Connie was new, and we were transitioning secretaries, and he is pointing out in his letter that it is a very complex process to go through for planning. He is not pointing to the planning department as being-
What he observed is that the reason why there are some delays is because of the complex process.
Right, because it's such a complex process.
I guess, yeah, so let me rephrase that. We have all heard of a couple of instances in the last few months, and that's why, I guess, I'm, I'm not pointing necessarily to this, but-
No, I'm just saying, in general, he's backing up the, the planning department, saying that when he was there, his experience is that they are giving the right information, and that it is a complex process, and people don't understand it when they show up, which-
It's not going to be instinct.
When they get the explanation of what they need to do, it's not necessarily their fault, because the way it's designed is not, it's not not customer-friendly, it's just that people don't have the awareness of what they need to do when they show up, so when they show up and find out they have to do five other things, you know, they're told by the planning to do those things before they come back, or whatever, and that's been his experience, that planning is actually more complex than people think. So, if people complain about that, maybe not being user, user-friendly specifically-
Maybe they need to understand.
Maybe they need to understand a little more about the difficulties that happen in the office, is really what he's saying.
Yeah, we also know that there's, you know, there's been some changes in regulations that increased some of the rigor on some of the developments, the requirements with stormwater drainage, we kind of got that education a few meetings ago. But as long as we're doing everything we can to support people and help them through the process, I've gone through a process and, years ago, and it was really frustrating. It was painful, because it just felt like I got the information I needed, but over three months versus one or two, or three sessions, but that's, you know, my personal experience, so.
Well, so to answer your question, Connie has put in place a number of checklists, so that people don't come in four times, and the fourth time, they say, oh, you know, we forgot to tell you, you need that.
One more thing.
She almost immediately put into place a checklist kind of process, so that people would know upfront, and sometimes they do some pushback. Well, I don't really need that certification. Well, yeah, you really do, and if you come back again and you don't have it, we can't go any further. So, people are pushing back a little on the planning process, and they're, you know, they need to, they need to cooperate as well. The other piece of it is that we are looking for somebody that is a little higher level than just a, an admin position, somebody that actually has planning background, that may have some conservation background. We, Connie and I have set up meetings for this Friday to interview people that have a little higher experience than we've had, so that they might be able to call out some of those things to start with. So, we are putting things in place that will help it get better.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
You have a comment? Could you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm Robert Hartstern.
Oh. There we go. The author's here.
Recognize that from the start.
I wanted to see what y'all had to say, to see how well I wrote the letter. Okay.
Yeah.
No, I read the article in a reminder, and when I went there, I was, I was part of swap, was. I guess I was amazed at how many things there were you had to do to get a permit, whether it was for a sign, or whether you wanted to extend the size of your lot, whether it was on a small scale, an individual person, I think they call them mom and pops, as opposed to a large corporation or a large business trying to develop a subdivision or a large parcel of land. I tried to help them while I was there, due to my background in, in planning and management, to streamline the process as much as I could with the ADRs that were available. The difficulty that I found were just a lack of knowledge on the part of a lot of people coming to the window, or trying to address what they need to do as an applicant to get their, get their application approved. Several of them that came up with that experience, were trying to circumvent the system, because it is a long process, because you have to advertise, you have to get approvals, you have to go through all these boards. So, it's, I don't know how you can make it any less complicated. I know Connie was trying to do that through these checklists, and try to maybe look at a flow chart or some other things that would help streamline it. I think that the first thing that has to happen is people have to go online or somewhere to find out what they need to do. I, I didn't realize that. I, and to that time, I guess I never went on the township's website to see what was there. When I did go, it can be complicated to get down to which one of those 24 farms you need to fill out to get what you need to do if you're not an experienced developer. The other thing I noticed in that article was there seemed to be a criticism of the fact that they don't have an engineer, and you have to go out, and I guess- fact that they don't have an engineer, and you have to go out and, I guess you have to get a consulting engineer to approve some of these forms. Uh, I know they have an engineer there, Tom Christensen is an engineer for DBW. He does a lot of the reviews, but I guess he's not registered, so you have to go out and have it, somebody stamp those drawings. I don't know how often that has to occur, whether you wanna hire a registered professional engineer on a full-time basis at the cost of the taxpayers as opposed to having the individual property development pay to have a consulting engineer approve that. What's the, uh, the cost benefit to the taxpayers and to the township and to the people trying to develop? So, all the experience, first off, the professionalism that I experienced working with the people at DBW, and I worked at HR, I worked in the health, uh, the Health Department and Planning. Um, they were all very conscientious and devoted to their jobs, and so I don't see a problem with the individuals working there, or people trying to get the, the work done. That's always trying to, uh, transfer through my, my memo, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under Orders of the Day, under Licensing Matters, I don't believe there are any.
It's the first.
And under Financial Matters, same situation. So we moved to Old Business, and, um, I don't see Sarah here, so, uh, I know we were asking for some documentation on...
I had that.
To approve some bills, so if you could...
Yeah. Um, so as I had stated, I didn't have the breakdown with me, but as I had stated, these were previous year, previ, these were previous year deductibles that we received, a bill from Amaya, um, in December, saying, oh, we forgot to bill you on those. If you recall, I said that, um, Maya also gave us a grant for, to sorta offset some of these costs, and they have changed their process, because I said $43,000 in prior year's deductibles is unacceptable. Since they are prior years, we need to go, um, for approval to, to you all for those. So that's, that's what we had done at the last meeting. So the, these are, um, you can see, uh, the names of the, um, claimants in the middle column, what the lawsuit was about, and that these were 2015, uh, 16, 17 was sewer backups, um, creed denomination is, uh, the LaFave, um, then a couple of, um, employees that are no longer here, uh, general liability, a couple more sewer backups, and another person that is no longer with us. So, um, without saying a whole lot about who they are and, and what the lawsuits are about, these are covered by insurance, but we have a, a deductible of 5,000 or 2,500, um, and they just billed us for them, um, after the year had passed.
Yeah, I think the point of our conversation back then was just if we had some documentation before we approved, um, $43,000. And appreciate the time and effort that was put into this to, uh, give us something to work off, so, um, that being said, um...
Quick, uh, question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we're approving $43,000, and what was the credit that they gave you?
I think, uh, it wa, it was not the 43, I think it was like 15,000. Um, I don't remember, I can get that to you.
And the credit will come off the next year's bill?
Correct.
Okay.
And going forward, when we make a claim, they will charge us the deductible right there, just like you would for your insurance, you know?
Mm-hmm. You good, Joe? Yeah, thanks. Any other questions? I'll give this one to, um, Don, please.
I made a motion to approve the funding of prior year's bills totaling $30,000 for the general fund from free cash and $13,274 from the sewer fund from free cash.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. She passes. Let's see, so, so under HC3, Discussion of Balance of Existing, okay, this is a different subject here, and Bruce isn't here, I don't believe?
Bruce is not here. Um, there is a, a bit of information, it's a list of bonds that are outstanding, however, um, he owed me a memo on that, and he said he will have that memo to me, and I'll forward it to you all for the next meeting. He was not aware until he saw the agenda that this was going to be on the agenda, so he apologizes, he didn't have the memo ready, he didn't realize there was a timeline for it. He'll get it to me, and that will explain that sheet that you have with, uh, the outstanding amounts. There are only three that are, that are related to Public Works, the rest are related to subdivisions, which would be, unfortunately for Connie, the Planning Department, um, and that's an inherited group of, um, uh, past, uh, things that I would hope we could wait a little bit longer on, especially with, uh, usually i, in the winter, you're not gonna be finishing subdivision things, uh, roads and driveways and, uh, retention basins, that's usually in the spring and summer, so that would give us a little time to get our staff, staffing back up to what it should be, and, uh, then we can address those as well.
So no, no motion being required, no other questions?
No, but to, to Counselor Ford's point, maybe if we're just clear that that's okay with you all, so that I'm not expected to be doing something that I understood one way and you understood another way, so is that all right with you all?
Should we just table it and make a motion to table it till the next meeting?
Or two meetings from now?
Or...
Two meetings from now, whatever, whatever you mean.
Or until we have more information?
Yeah, we, I prefer to ha, keep, I mean, it's just for the Chair.
For the memo.
I'd like to at least keep it on the table somewhere, otherwise it can get lost, so if we put it out to our first meeting in, in March, for the sake of discussion, at least it'll be on our, it'll be on the calendar to have some type of response by then.
And by then, we'd have an admin person that would be able to help...
One would hope, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree, Don, good point, because we're gonna lose, there's so many things with budgeting and...
Yeah.
Other things that are gonna come up very quickly. So, do you wanna do that, then, Mike, uh, first meeting in March?
I think it's a good suggestion. I don't know if that dovetails with anything else that you might be bringing Bruce in for that, that you might know about in the future, so that we're not pulling him in for one item?
Well, he can do the memo on that, and I don't think there will be a lot of discussion about the memo, but he's willing to come to any meeting.
Okay.
So I would think the first meeting in March is, is reasonable, and by then, we might be able to do a subdivision update as well, okay?
Okay.
Do we need a motion, or can we just put that in our first meeting in March? Do we need a motion?
It doesn't hurt to make a motion.
Then I'll ask Don for the motion.
I'll make a motion that we table discussion, uh, item 8C3, Discussion of Balance of Existing Developer Bonds, uh, until our first regularly scheduled meeting in March.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, uh, under New Business, D., Discussion of Conservation Commission Consultant Fee Schedule, Director of Planning and Community Development. I'm sure Connie has something for us.
I believe the Chair of the Conservation Commission is also present.
Connie, could you please, just for the record, could you please just identify yourself?
Certainly. Constance Broders, Planning and Community Development Director, 6415 Bigelow Commons, Enfield, Connecticut. And I do believe Chair Craig Jornstrom is in the, uh, why don't you come on up and you can discuss this matter with me, since it's your commission? Do you want to state your name?
State your name for the record and add that.
Craig Jornstrom, uh, 799 Parker Street, East Long Meadow, Conservation Commission Chairperson.
Do you have a copy of the memo? Okay, so, excuse me, so back in October, after I had an opportunity to review the general bylaw, the fee schedule for the Conservation Commission comes, is, is in the general bylaw, not in the zoning bylaw, and I found that, um, we had an application that should go for peer review, and, um, the fee schedule was a little lower than what is the norm today, and it ranged from, uh, $100 to, I believe, um...
Three hundred.
Three hundred. No, a thousand dollars, uh, 5,000. So, if you look at page two of four, you'll see under Section 10.011 Conservation Commission Consultant Fees, "The projects proposing 1,000 to 1,500 square feet of alteration of the 100-foot buffer zone or 50 linear feet of a bank or waterway alteration, the consultant fee shall not exceed $100." It's sort of like when Austin Powers was saying $1 million back then. That's what you're seeing here. So projects proposing 1,500 to 2,500 square feet of alteration of the bank, excuse me, of the 100-foot buffer zone or 50 to 200 linear feet of bank or waterway alteration, the consultant fee shall not exceed $400. And it goes on to 1,000 to 500. So, um, after consulting with, uh, one of our consulting engineers, Ty and Bond, as well as Russo Engineering, I found that it realistically fell short, these fee schedules, and I concluded that the fees stipulated under the general bylaw to be unreasonable as not having kept pace with the market conditions. Therefore, I recommended that the fee schedule be repealed from the general bylaw, and I recommended that the staff, the fee schedules be determined by current market condition as needed and separate from the bylaws of the town of East Long Meadow. Most fee schedules today are not incorporated into the body of the bylaw, they're a separate fee schedule and they're referred to, because as you can see, anytime you want to amend the fee schedule, it has to go before the governing board, whereas the Conservation Commission would have the opportunity to say, yep, this is not really what we see as being realistic, we, we would encourage that we increase the fee, separate fee schedule is, is, um, is provided for the constituency so that they're aware when the projects come forward. So, I have in this memo the current bylaw, as well as the proposed text amendment to the bylaw, and I hope you have color in your...
Yeah, we don't have color.
Oh, good, okay. Because the color reflects that which is to be changed, either deleted or amended. So if you, um, at this time, would like to consider, and this is not the public hearing, right? You're, you're voting to consider recommending this for a public hearing.
Back to Planning. Yeah, we go to Planning.
It wouldn't go back to the Planning Board. Would it go to the bylaw subcommittee?
Yeah, yeah, 'cause it's not a zoning bylaw, it's a general bylaw.
Right. Right.
So then Conservation would have an open hearing on it, discussing the amendment. Am I correct, or?
Well, it would go to the bylaw subcommittee.
For a recommendation to the Council. It would change the bylaw, which then we would have a hearing on the bylaw.
Bylaw change would, correct.
The bylaw change would do, go through the public hearing, we read twice here, two different meetings, and then we would go through the process here, which would change it, then you would set the schedule, if it passed.
So there will be public hearings, but they would be under the Town Council?
Council, this is a bylaw change.
Rather than the Conservation Commission?
Yep.
And we did discuss the...
Yes, we approved that a few months ago. Um, yeah. Um, one of the things that I would like to point out about this, because there's been a lot of talk, um, about all the storm reviews that need to go out for everything that go, or a lot of the items that go in front of the, uh, Planning Board, um, the majority of projects that come before Conservation will not require an outside review. Um, a lot of times, where it would more apply is if we are recreating a wetland, and wetland scientists need to be involved, and, and other more, um, projects that are more intrusive into the wetland or resource area, whether it be a riverfront or a wetland. So, the amount of projects that this would apply to would be minimal.
So you're, you're, you're talking about, you'd be able to do the job to eliminate a peer review, is essentially what you're stay, saying, right?
Um, essentially, it is a peer review.
Right.
Yeah.
But, like, that's what I'm saying, is the majority of our projects do not require a peer review.
Mm-hmm.
Ones that, ones that would be like a wetlands replication, or something that's more complicated, um, you know, and we don't have a wetland scientist on the commission, so that would be a, an example of something we would go to an outside consultant or peer review for.
So that would be the scientist when we're talking about wetland, and I, I understand that, so I would just ask the question, if we had an engineer on staff, would that, um, could that suffice as peer review for subjects of that matter?
You need a soil scientist, someone who specializes in soils, you know, we have...
Okay, outside of that, when, I meant, when it comes to an engineering standpoint, if we had an engineer, um, on other subject matters that require a peer review, would, if we had an engineer on staff, could that person suffice to do the, uh, peer review?
They would have to be in, someone who specializes environmental, in environmental matters, and you know that there are different types of engineers, you have civil, you have, so it's, this would be specifically in an...
I would think the person could possibly do it, though, yes.
We're, we're talking just, yeah, apples and oranges, just a little bit, because...
Yeah.
I, I know we've never had an environmental engineer on staff, and I, I don't believe we ever will, so I was talking more on, you know, back to a, a planning matter, more of when somebody submits a plan, an engineering plan of infrastructure, and it needs to be, have a peer review done by an engineer, such as Titan Bond, not an environmental engineer, if we had somebody at that level like we did in the past, would that individual be able to do the...
That's not, that's not what this is about.
No, and it's just an unrelated question.
So we can't really, yeah. That would be something that we'd have to prepare, you know, some kind of, it's really not something to be discussed under this, but rather...
This is a fee, simply the fee schedule. We'd like to take it out of the bylaw.
Yeah, this is an environmental issue, that I understand.
Take it out of the bylaw and, uh, set up a separate fee schedule, um, and it's simply repealing this section of, of the bylaw where we have addressed a fee schedule.
Well, that was a problem with a lot of the bylaws, is they had the fee schedule listed in it, and so every time we wanted to change the fee schedule, which is why we tried originally to get the fee schedules out of the bylaws before, when we did the review, was to take those fee schedules out and s, put in language that said they should be established by the department, whatever, whether it's Clerk's Office, whoever, those fee schedules are all in there, but every time you change the fee schedule, you had to have a public hearing to change the fee schedule, even though you were impacting the bylaw, but because it was part of it. So realistically, what they're looking to do is take the fee schedule piece out of the bylaw, so that way, every time the fees change with the market rate, we don't have to revisit a public hearing to change the fees.
Change the bylaw to change the fee.
Change the fee, right?
Yeah.
So that's really what, what it's talking about, so...
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if that's, anybody got anything else, really?
No, I'm, I'm good.
All right.
Joe?
No, we don't have to know.
No.
So I, I would just, I'd be happy to, you know, to refer this on and...
Yeah, we should go to the bylaw subcommittee.
Absolutely, let them assess it and make their recommendation, I mean, that's as much as we need to do, not for this.
I'll make a motion to refer the proposed... Could I, I have, we have one question in the audience first.
We should not be taking...
Yeah, we shouldn't take questions.
Okay.
It's not really a question, it was a statement, and I think it's very pertinent. Through the Chair.
It's up to you.
All right, then, yep, if you would, state your name for the record and...
Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. I just wanted to point out, under the Charter, Article 2, Section 7, clearly states that a bylaw is required for any fees that the town is gonna initiate. So if there is a fee schedule, there has to be a bylaw that pertains to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there will be, there will be a bylaw, the bylaw will refer to the fee schedule, the fee schedule very representative of what needs to be charged in accordance with more modernized fee schedule as recommended, so, again, this should go to others to review, and then if they determine that it's within, that sounds like it's exactly within the scope of the Charter.
Right.
So...
Now make a motion to refer to proposed Conservation Commission Consultant Fee Schedule to the bylaw committee for recommendation to the Council.
Second.
Third.
Fourth.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. All right, so we moved to zoning by, uh, zoning bylaw amendment to include, um, a mixed-use district encrusted by Fitzgerald Law Offices, representing MNA of Long Meadow.
We're back. Hey, no. My name's Frank Fitzgerald, I'm attorney with offices at 46 Center Square in East Long Meadow, Mass. I'm here representing MNA of Long Meadow, uh, MNA East Long Meadow, um, with regard to, uh, request, or an application for the creation of a mixed-use residential district. We can, we've been here before, um, it's very difficult to dis, discuss a project of this type without, uh, discussing the project itself, and so we kinda put the cart before the horse, and shame on us for that. Uh, we're back here now, asking you to refer, uh, the matter of the creation of a mixed-use residential district in the zoning bylaws of the town to the Planning Board for... residential district in the zoning bylaws of the town to the planning board for further dialogue and discussion at public hearings. We've had several, uh, meetings already with the planning board, and there's a good dialogue going along, and with a view towards, at some point in time, uh, coming back with, uh, an opinion from the planning board with regard to the zoning bylaw itself, and then subsequent to that, there would be a request for, if the zoning bylaw is enacted, a request perhaps of zone change for this particular site.
Don?
Yeah, I just, a couple of questions. Basically, there's not a, there's no wording for this bylaw at this moment. So what we're, what we're doing is just referring the concept of asking the planning board to come up with some wording, to come back to us?
Chairman's here, and I believe that's what he's intending to do.
Okay. Can I help defer to the chair?
My man. George Kingston, Chair of the Planning Board, six-six Rural Lane. Uh, I've tried to explain on a number of occasions, this is a three-step process.
Right.
The first step is you have to write the bylaw that creates the zone, okay? Because without that, you can't do anything. The second step, then, is to assign that zone to some place in town, to put it on the zoning map.
Right.
And only at that point can you then address a particular project that, that is being proposed. What we need to do is to draft a zoning bylaw change that describes the zone, how it's going to be, uh, addressed by the planning board, and what the restrictions are and are, what the setbacks are going to be, what the density is going to be. All of that needs to be put into language. Okay? Once that's done, it comes back to you people to see whether or not you agree that that's the kind of zone that we want in this town. And only then can we say, okay, let's find a place in town to put that on the map. Okay? So this is, this is really, should have been the first step, and for a number of reasons, it was advertised, um, differently, and we need to clarify that to keep it legal.
Thank you.
Can I just finish my second question?
Yes, absolutely.
So, which leads me to my second question, is, and I think George may have answered it. So the "we" that's creating the bylaw will be the planning board.
Correct.
All right, so, it's not necessarily going to be a cookie cutter, if they're ninety, ten percent, you know, the house residential to that, you're going to set parameters as a, as a board that you feel are in the best interest of the town of East Long Meadow, not just for this one project, but for other projects, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, we'll look for guidance to what's worked in other towns, but we're going to write it for what we think is right for East Long Meadow.
Okay.
Okay.
So, through the chair. So, George, I know probably a lot of people watching have no idea, like, so we, we've never had a mixed use?
Right.
In our history. Um, is there any other way to address this project, other than to do all this, to create this, this mixed-use zone? Is there any other things that can be done without having to then now set this precedence that?
There are probably many different uses that the property could be put to. Uh, no one's come forward to put it to that use yet. Okay? If we want to use that property as a mixture of housing and retail, which is the proposal, then we need to write a new zone for that. We, we don't have anything in our zoning bylaw that would allow that today.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I, could I clarify briefly? And George, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is not specific to that particular project, but if East Long Meadow wants any mixed use anywhere in town, a bylaw needs to be put in place.
We can't have a mixed use without the bylaw.
So, so it has more to do with that kind of a use of land, any place in East Long Meadow, and then somebody can come in from any place that fits the parameters that East Long Meadow puts in place, and says, ah, I have enough land to do that, and it fits the parameter, I could check off the boxes for that kind of use. So it's more a discussion of, does the town of East Long Meadow want mixed use in their land use at all, rather than specific to an area?
If, you know, if I'd like to follow up, is, what this is doing is not merely creating a bylaw, it's creating a zone.
Right.
Correct.
Right. So that, if people think that we're creating a bylaw where it's going to be an allowed use in existing zones, that's not what we're saying.
Correct.
We're saying a new zone is going to be created.
Correct.
So if somebody has a forty-acre piece, let's say one of the golf course, just for the sake, sake of discussion, they don't, as a matter of right, can say, I want a mixed use. They can request it, and it would still go through the scrutiny of a zone change.
Correct. It would be a change to the zoning map.
Yeah.
Depending on how the bylaw is written, as to where in town it could actually go, but it would be a change to the zoning map, yes.
Well, for good, then I'll entertain a motion, Paul, if you can entertain a motion.
I'd like to propose a motion to refer to the planning board for review and subsequent public hearing, a request by the petitioner for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment to include a mixed-use district. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hope she passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we missed two public hearings.
We're twenty-five minutes later.
George, you don't like that side?
Yeah.
It's not pushing.
Okay, so our, our first public meeting tonight, our public hearing, is, um, a proposed, proposed zone bylaw amendment, Section five point eight, regarding, um, signs. And before we start, um, I'd just like to read the protocol here. The reason for this public hearing is, is to be read for the first time, so this public hearing will, will not be closed, it'll be a first reading only. Um, council members are Paul Federici, Kevin Manley, Don Anderson, myself, Mike Kane, and Joe Ford. Um, once I finish this, I'll open the public meeting, uh, but once the meeting is opened, then the clerk will read the notice into the record, um, I'll have the applicant present the case, the meeting is, is being recorded, and, uh, let me just see if there's anything else pertinent here. So, um, that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time, and Tom, if you could read the notice into the record?
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January eighth, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty P.M. in the media room of the Council on Aging located at three twenty-eight North Main Street, to address a proposed bylaw amendment to the town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaw, Section five point eight, signs. Information related to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, Clerk of the council.
Thanks, Tom. George, are you?
Yeah. George, six-six Rural Lane, East Long Meadow, Chair of the Planning Board. Um, this bylaw change is part of what we, you were talking about earlier, making the process of starting a business, or modifying a business, easier and less time-consuming for the applicant. Uh, currently, when someone wants to put up a new sign, they go to the building commissioner, the building commissioner reviews the application, sends it to the planning board, the planning board votes on it, and it goes back to the building commissioner to actually issue the building permit for it. This procedure was put in decades ago, uh, because the planning board felt they needed to have control over, over signage, and, and we do, by, by the way the zoning bylaw is written, we have very detailed things that say this is what the sign has to be. But as it turns out, the building commissioner is also the zoning enforcement officer, and so the building commissioner is not going to approve a sign that violates zoning. Uh, or if he does, he's not going to enforce against it. So, it's a waste of time for the planning board, it's a waste of time for the applicant, and in many cases, because of the time issues, signs actually go up before they're approved. And, uh, that's because it takes a minimum of two weeks for the time you file the application, more like three usually, until the planning board can actually act on it. So it's kind of a useless process right now, and by clearing this up, we'll make the, the process much more user-friendly for the applicants, and that's why we're proposing it. Uh, we've discussed this a lot at Planning Board, and we feel that giving up that control is appropriate.
Thank you. So I guess I'll ask anyone in the audience if they have any comments that they'd like to make at this time regarding this subject. Um, could you come forward and state your name and address, please?
Camusa Fitzgerald, twenty-eight Dartmouth Lane, East Long Meadow. Um, my question would just be on signage, um, are there, is there any more rigor to the review that the planning board does at this point, when looking at signs and the quality of them, that, um, wouldn't happen if it just went back to the zoning enforcer? In terms of, in just in terms of the aesthetic and the quality of the signs, would we lose any of the rigor?
Mm-hmm. Through the chair? I would ask.
The planning board does not rule on the aesthetics of signs. Okay? We rule on their size and construction and type of sign, whether it's lighted, or moving pictures, or whatever. We don't, we really can't tell somebody what their sign has got to look like, particularly if they're a franchisee, and the corporation says, this is what the sign looks like. So, um, we don't deal with aesthetics, we deal with size. That, that's the main thing, to make sure that signs are not too big, that we don't have too many signs.
So I would ask who, who dealt with that in the past, because I, there were signs that were put up on buildings, such as, um, I think it was called West Bank at the time, and it was a neon sign, and it was very bothersome to people, and, um, that sign had, was taken down and, and changed, so what, what committee?
That was planning board. I was on, I was on that. And that sign wasn't a neon sign, it just had such high intensity that it turned the white church and the rotary pink. It was that bright.
I thought they painted.
Marilyn, were you on with me? Yeah?
But this is, again, something that the, the building commissioner, the, the zoning enforcement officer would be the person to deal with that.
Realistically, the only change in here, sorry, Mike. The only change in here is where it says planning board, is building commissioner.
I'm sorry?
Real changes in here are only where it says planning board to building commissioner.
That's right.
That's the only change, is that?
Correct.
Unless I'm missing something.
Right.
It's not in red.
The sign, the sign...
He's going to do the same thing that the bylaw says, just not you.
Right.
That's it.
Right now, we basically rubber stamp them.
Right.
So why put three weeks onto the business owner opening up, and, um, take up our time when we're not adding, adding value to it? Now, we, we recognize that when you're starting a small business, every day that you have to wait, and you're paying rent, and you can't open your door, or have your sign up, is expensive. So, you know, we're trying to be business-friendly here, and make it go quick.
So the enforcement is still there, it's just a different agent?
The same agent does the enforcement.
Right, different agent.
You don't have to go back to planning for a sign thing.
Right, right. So, I mean, we're still protected.
Yeah, we're still protected.
Marilyn?
Marilyn Richards, three forty-two Pinehurst. Don and I were on the board, we were the ones that wanted more control when the church turned pink. And, and actually, we did make decisions based on the aesthetics of the sign. Um, if it was, if it was not a sign in keeping with the town of East Long Meadow, in our respectful opinion, we did make decisions about toning things down, or perhaps maybe doing things, but I'm not, I'm not objecting to this. I, I think that it speaks well for our building inspector, and, you know, moving forward. But my question is, if there is a challenge to a sign that's been approved, because the building inspector has approved this, the same process I would expect would be for a decision of the building inspector, if, um, someone took exception to a sign that was, you know, in our town, that we would, within the, the twenty or thirty days that the building inspector makes the decision, we could appeal it. Is that the process? Where, does the planning board have any involvement with if there's a questionable sign, or if, if the decision's made and there's a question, you go through the appeal process like you would with the decision for a building inspector?
I'm not sure what the process for appealing the decision of a building commissioner is, okay? Because, for instance, if he were to issue a building permit for a house, and someone objected to the depth of the foundation, and said it didn't, didn't meet the building code, I don't know who they'd appeal to. That, that's, that's a state building code issue, not a planning issue.
Probably, probably housing court.
Through the chair, if I may answer that question. So when there is, uh, an appeal, it is submitted through the, through the planning office, and then the zoning board of appeals is the, the board that hears the, the, um, the appeal.
The appeal, okay.
Yes, yes.
I just wondered, the sign.
Yes, they would, they would hear the sign, because they are, again, he is the code enforcement officer, and any appeal to, um, that is made in regard to any, any code, goes to the zoning board of appeals.
And I think in reference to the previous speaker's question about anything that we're losing by making this change, at least we have the comfort that if there is a sign that, whatever, is offensive in some way, shape, or form, and I don't expect that there will be, but I just wanted to know what the process does. Thank you. Thank you, Connie.
Oh, you're welcome, and that is a point well taken. At this, at this juncture, we do not have architectural design guidelines, so that we can enforce, um, signage that should be in keeping with the context of the style and the architecture of the structure, that it's enhancing, that is something we would like to look to, uh, look toward in, when, when we begin to examine our zoning bylaw, to see where its shortcomings are, and there are many shortcomings in the zoning bylaw. And we hope this year, through our meetings, to do some long-range planning, and look at the current zoning, and see how we may better improve, and again, better serve the constituency, which is why you see this flurry of changes before you, um, at this juncture, my first year being your planning and community development director.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other public comments? Um, yes, sir.
Robert Hartstern, sixteen Windsor Lane, East Long Meadow. Again, one of the things I had to deal with in working and planning is a lot of sign questions, people coming to the window, why isn't my sign ready, a lot of telephone calls. So it is, and also, each one of the planning meetings, you had to have the latest of the last minutes, highlight all that information. So it is time-consuming what, what has to be done by the planning commission to get these, uh, these signs approved. So if you can streamline it again, it'd be a benefit to the town.
Thank you. Well, if we can streamline it and still have the protection there, I guess that's a good thing. So, um, if there's no other comments, I'd ask for a motion, Joe.
Excuse me, you have to read?
Nine, nine A.
You have to read into the, for record, for a first reading?
Oh, I knew there was a sixteen-page document. Is there something streamlined?
Just this part.
Okay.
Do you want me to read that, too? The proposed part.
If it's, if it's in front of you, and it's convenient, that would be great.
Tom, which part do you want me to read? This one?
I actually, is this the here?
Do you have to start with purpose? Do you have to close the public portion first?
Because we have to continue.
We can open.
Okay. Uh, Section five point eight, signs, purpose, the purpose of this bylaw amendment is to repeal sections of the town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaws approved by town meeting October twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, which stipulate that all signed application permits must go before the planning board for review and approval. After conferring with the building commissioner, we now respectfully propose to streamline the review of signed applications to promote, promote efficiency in the permitting process by designating certain powers to the building commissioner. Pursuant to Chapter forty A, Section seven of Massachusetts General Law, the inspector of buildings, building commissioner, or local inspector, or if there are none in a town, the board of selectmen, or person, or boards designated by local ordinance or bylaw, shall be charged with the enforcement of the zoning ordinance or bylaw. Furthermore, as defined by the town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaw, zoning enforcement authority, the building commissioner is charged with enforcing all zoning bylaws of East Long Meadow, seven point five point three definitions. So, do you want the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So it's nine A. Uh, I'd like to propose a motion to continue the, the public hearing for a second reading to address the proposed zoning bylaw amendment, Section five point eight, signs to January twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, at seven P.M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Do we need a roll call vote? No, just?
I don't think we need a roll call vote. Does somebody want to clarify that?
Roll call vote.
Kevin?
I just want to clarify that Mr. Ford, I believe, said January 22, 2018.
Oh, sorry, my apologies.
No, you don't need a roll call.
Oh, I actually read it verbatim. Sorry. My apology. I do know it's 2019.
So we have a second public hearing. It was scheduled for 7:10, so it looks like we're, we're back on course here.
Mr. Chairman, you don't need a roll call, but you do need a vote on that.
We did, right?
Yeah, we did. I'm sorry, forgive me.
Okay. No roll call, okay. So our second, our second public hearing, I was starting to say, is scheduled for 7:10. Regarding commercial vehicles, so?
6:40, Mike.
6:40.
Oh, that's the continuation. The next day.
Okay.
That's the 6:40. That would be the January 22 time for 2019.
Okay, so that being said, the reason for this public hearing is to read for the first time a new proposed zoning bylaw to amend Section 7 definitions, commercial vehicles. Again, council members, Paul Federici, Kevin Manley, Don Anderson, Mike Kane, and Joe Ford. At this time, Tom, could you read the record into the notice?
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 8, 2019, at 6:40 PM in the meeting room of the Council on Aging located at 328 North Main Street to address a proposed bylaw amendment to the Town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaw, Section 8 definitions, specifically, commercial vehicles. Information relating to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the Council, Thomas Florence, Clerk of the Council.
Thank you, Tom. The applicant again is the Planning Board, so, George.
This, let me emphasize, this is not a change to the regulations for parking of commercial vehicles in residential areas. We have regulations on the books about parking commercial vehicles in residential areas. The problem is that we'd never had a definition of commercial vehicle written into the bylaw. As a result, the building inspector felt, the zoning enforcement officer, felt that it was unenforceable because just having commercial plates on your vehicle does not mean that it's a commercial vehicle. If it's over a certain weight, you need to have commercial plates, apparently, whether or not you're using it in a business. Likewise, there are people who use vehicles in their business that do not have commercial plates. They just use their personal car to do whatever it is they're going to do. After discussion with the council, it became apparent that the issue is not so much a commercial vehicle as what we call portable billboards. Vehicles with signage on them that are being left in driveways to, people feel that this detracts from the residential nature of the neighborhood. So the definition that we wrote says, defines a commercial vehicle as a vehicle used in business as indicated by signage on the vehicle or other indications such as ladder racks and things like, equipment, is the way it's written. This gives the building, the zoning enforcement officer, a clear guidance as to what is objectionable and what is not. And we feel this will make it a lot easier for him to enforce the existing bylaw, which basically says that if you're going to have a commercial vehicle parked on your property, it needs to be screened in some way, either garaged or otherwise screened from the street, so that it does not detract from the residential nature of the neighborhood. And this is what we're proposing then for this bylaw change. Again, it does not change the regulations in place. It simply more carefully defines what we consider a commercial vehicle.
Thank you. For the record, the public hearing is now open, and we're open for comments for the public. And I will start with Mr. Henry.
Pat Henry, Ridge Road, East Long Meadow. I would like to suggest that you read the bylaw first before we have discussion so that we know what's really on the table. Sort of a Robert Rule of the Board of Basic.
Great, and Tom read the last one at the very end.
This is for the purpose of clarifying, for the purpose of amending and clarifying Section 8 definitions in our Town East Long Meadow zoning bylaw, following words shall have meanings given hereafter. Commercial vehicle, any vehicle currently registered as such with the state registry of motor vehicles or equivalent out of state or federal agency and is used primarily in the conduct of a business as evidenced by signage or other commercial enhancements to the vehicle as opposed to private, family, or individual use. Where appropriate, the plural shall include the singular. Definitions are provided strictly for clarification, not to be interpreted as permissible or allowable unless stated in a table of uses within the zoning bylaw.
Thanks, Kevin. Any other public comments? Ralph?
Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. The only question I have is, or other commercial enhancements to the vehicle. A lot of people have private trucks with snowplows on them. Is that going to be considered a commercial enhancement? I know if you're looking to get rid of the large billboards in town, I, for one, I'm a landscape contractor, I have trailers. My trailers are 22 feet long with my signage across them. That is not considered a commercial vehicle. It is registered as a trailer, specifically as a trailer. It's not a commercial vehicle. These are just questions that popped into my head quickly, and like I said, I think the snowplow is evident. I have one neighbor who has a pickup truck. He does his mother's house, his grandmother's house, has a plow on it. The very next house, the truck looks identical with a snowplow, but he takes care of about 45 driveways. How do you distinguish the two? Thank you.
I will ask, George or Connie, maybe you can comment on that?
Yeah, the, snowplows are not, I don't think, an issue. Obviously, this is going to require some judgment on the part of the zoning enforcement officer. What, when we put in that, that phrase about other commercial enhancements, I think it's pretty obvious when you're looking at a truck with toolboxes all over it and ladder racks that that's a commercial enhancement. Okay, if somebody's got a toolbox across their bed, you know, that's not a commercial enhancement. We could go into pages of definitions as to what this applies to. I think we've got a reasonable zoning enforcement officer who can make reasonable judgments on it. And if somebody wants to contest a ticket that he gives because they disagree with his judgment, they're free to do that.
And through the chair, they go before the Zoning Board of Appeals where they're heard.
Yeah, there you go.
Follow-up question to Ralph's comment. So Ralph's situation, where you had somebody who did not have, you know, a special permit or so, so forth to run the business, so they bring a 20-foot trailer in, and they run it, and they have a non-commercial truck, or pickup truck, and the trailer is, is a billboard advertising. Would that trailer fall into the purview of this? Or do we need an amendment to the language to include that?
I would recommend that we leave the definition of commercial vehicle as is. We need to examine what is allowed in the way of trailers in the, in the bylaw. I don't have that off the top of my head. It's a different type of thing than a vehicle. And I know that there are some restrictions, not only on commercial trailers, but on personal trailers, like camping trailers, that they're supposed to be screened or put in the backyard or something like that. I don't have that language in front of me. I think trailers are a separate issue that we may need to deal with. But for the time being, I think if we can get, deal with commercial vehicles, let's do that. Do it one step at a time. As Ms. Broder's pointed out, you're going to see a lot of changes in the next couple of years in the zoning bylaw because there are inconsistencies. We now have a building inspector who's willing to read through it and tell us where he sees inconsistencies or contradictions, and we're going to clean it up. But it's going to take time. Okay, because as anything with zoning bylaws, you've got to be real careful about the changes because you change one thing, it changes 18 other things. So you've got to be really careful how you word it, which is why it took us so long to get this wording down.
And if I may, through the chair, we tried to simplify the process. We tried not to make it cumbersome for the, for the public as well as the zoning enforcement official. It's any commercial, any vehicle currently registered, and so if you read any vehicle, as opposed to private, family, or individual use. So when, I don't think the Smith family is going to be driving around with a trailer with, with a moniker along the panel saying, "The Smiths family trailer", I think that it.
You know, you give somebody a good idea right now.
I know, I know. So we're just trying to be realistic, simplistic, and straightforward, you know, and not make it subject to multiple interpretations. Simplicity is a beautiful thing.
Yeah, I would agree with what you said, too. We're talking about definitions of commercial vehicles, and a trailer is not a commercial vehicle. So.
We'll worry about that later.
That's, that's another date, and that's another time.
Exactly.
Any other public comments? Sir?
My name is Robert Hill, 31 Oakbrook Drive.
Could you, could you state that again, just up here? Because our microphone is set up up here, and that way we'll have it on record, so.
My name is Robert Hill, 31 Oakbrook Drive. I have a question about commercial vehicles and the definition. Does that include the TPWs vehicle, fire chiefs vehicle, police chiefs vehicle that they take home with signage on?
Those are, through the chair. Those are municipal vehicles, which are not subject to the zoning bylaw at this time. They, they have municipal plates on them.
Right. That's a different process through the registry of motor vehicles, so.
Yeah.
I can give you many instances where there's different processes through motor vehicles, but they don't all apply. And this, in my estimation, this proposal is way too vague for any enforcement at all. There's ways around everything. And if you're going to make this, it needs to be very specific, exactly what you want, and what can be and cannot be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Then I would ask for a motion, and I believe, to continue this public hearing. And Don?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for a second reading to address a proposed zoning bylaw amendment, Section 8 definitions, commercial vehicles, to January 22, 2019, at 7:10 PM. Second.
We have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kevin Manley. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
There's the vote, no roll call vote required. Move on to our third public hearing. The reason for this public hearing is for Town Council approval to change the zone from Resident, Residence C to Business Zoning District for 51 Prospect Street. Again, our council members are Paul Federici, Kevin Manley, Don Anderson, Mike Kane, and Joe Ford. I'd ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 8, 2019, at 6:50 PM in the meeting room at the Council on Aging located at 328 North Main Street to address a zoning change at 51 Prospect Street from Residence C to Business Zoning District, following approval by the Planning Board. Information relating to the zone change is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the Council, Thomas Florence, Clerk of the Council.
Thanks, Tom. I don't believe there's any other documentation that needs to be read into the record at this time. Is that correct?
Right.
Mike, the only thing I would just note is that this motion, this was actually approved by the, the affirmative recommended the zone change by the Planning Board on the 20th of November in a 4-0 vote, just so.
Thanks. This, okay, so. We have no applicant, or we do have an applicant here at this time, so.
Members of the council, my name is John Soja. I'm an attorney, maintaining an office on Boston Road in Wilbraham. I represent the interests of the applicant, Soja Property Management. This, this is, as I mentioned to the Planning Board when I first appeared against them, this is an anomaly. This is a, a property that houses a building with four businesses. And it's been that way since it was put up in 1979, almost 40 years ago. And somehow, this thing has slipped, slipped between the cracks relative to its appropriate zoning designation. And that's really the essence of it. I think it's something that this board needs to address and to, and to clean up. The property is located contiguous and adjacent to other business zone properties, so it would fit in, it wouldn't be a spot zoning issue, issue at all.
Thank you. So just to clarify, this public heating, a public meeting is now open. Is there any public comments at all regarding this matter? Seeing none, I believe we can close this public hearing and take in council comments this time?
Continue.
Any comments at all? No?
No, there's nothing. For approval, right? We're not continuing this one. This one's done.
I'm sorry?
This one's done.
Right, okay. Then.
Is this your part or a second reading?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
So, that being said, could I have a motion from Kevin?
Make a motion to approve a new zone change at 51 Prospect Street from Residence C to Business Zoning District.
Second.
All in favor?
Well, can I just chime in? I believe, because this is a zone change, we'll need a roll call vote, supermajority, because it's a zone change. And since we have two people missing, we need a unanimous vote by the five of us, just as an FYI. So, and it probably shouldn't be a roll call. And the other, only other comment I was going to make, if this were another zone change for, we would probably refer it to my, the subcommittee. But this, and I was at the Planning Board hearing, and this is an absolute, was a mistake on our maps and so forth. That piece is business-owned. It should have been business-owned, and it will be business-owned. It is not a, so the public understand this is not how we do zone changes. This was, it clearly was an anomaly. And the Planning Board was correct in, in that, in that vote. I mean, I moved into the town in 1987, and that was a business even back then, and I agree with Attorney Soja on that. So anyway, I just had to make that comment. But we have a motion, and, and I believe we need a roll call and make sure it's 5-0.
Okay, so we'll, we'll start with Paul Federici to approve.
Aye.
Kevin? Don?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Joe?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Michael, any zoning map amendment down the road in the future on this also?
Through the chair. What, what our town clerk was saying is that our current zoning map still shows the wrong zone, I mean, the old zone for it. So what, so, so it doesn't fall through the cracks, we'll need to update our zoning map to have this specific piece part of the rest of the business zone that it abuts.
Okay. All right. So I'd like to make a motion at this time that we leave our open session portion of the meeting to enter into executive session and return to open session only for the purposes of adjournment.
Second.
Anything we need a roll, we need a roll call too on this, right?
Wait, don't you want to read the, the strategy for litigation?
Yes, yes.
Discuss strategy regarding litigation.
Discuss strategy regarding litigation, it will be detrimental to our position if it was discussed publicly.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Roll call, roll call.
Anytime you, anytime you do these, you've got to do roll call.
Paul?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
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 Want a quick adjournment?
Leave.
Is that okay?
We have to wait till...